Lawrence County Commissioners. I would ask if you have a, any type of electronic communication device, if you'd be kind enough to put it on the silent or vibrate mode. Appreciate that, appreciate that courtesy. And as we always do, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and ask you to remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Loretta, could you lead us in the pledge?
I will, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, we'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you all very much. Vanessa, would you mind calling a roll?
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. We do have a quorum. As long as there's two of us here, we can, we've got business. We always have time for public comment, both at the beginning of the meeting and then prior to adjournment. And we welcome any public comments or questions. We would ask that your comments be related to county government issues or matters that you might have. If it's a state-related matter, we would suggest you see your state representative or state senator. Same would apply if it's a federal matter, you might try your federal representatives. If it's a local city, borough, or township matter, might speak to the folks there. But if it's a county matter, you come to the right place. So, but before we get to public comment, we always allow time on our agenda for role officer reports and comments. And our esteemed registrar and recorder is with us, Tammy Crawford. Tammy, it's a pleasure. Would you, if you'd like, we'd like for the microphone to pick you up. So please, be comfortable. We'll afford to hearing what you have to tell us.
Good morning. Um, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Recorder of Deeds Office is offering a free fraud protection tool called Property Alert. This is being put into place to protect property owners against property fraud and to help ease the minds of property owners in our county. Property fraud is a rare occurrence in Lawrence County. However, we do receive a number of phone calls requesting that this type of service be offered. So as a proactive measure, our office is making this a free monitoring service for property owners in Lawrence County. So anyone interested can access this service through the Lawrence County Government Center website by clicking on the Recorder of Deeds and the Registerables and Recorder of Deeds tab under Government. And then the Property Alert link is on the right side of the page. If you need assistance, don't hesitate to contact the Recorder of Deeds Office. I'll also be at the tax outreach base along with Treasurer Richard Verpone to sign up any interested property owners. So once signup is complete, anytime anything is recorded in the Recorder of Deeds Office under the name that was signed up for, an alert will come to your email. Please note that this does not mean that anything fraudulent has occurred. It is just a notification that there has been activity under the name that was signed up under Property Alert. So I'm really excited to make this available to property owners in Lawrence County. And I hope that it eases the minds of those who worry about property fraud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Yes.
Loretta, any questions for Tammy?
None, none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have in our packet a copy of your press release. I think the news already ran something.
She did, yes.
Yes, so, but Debbie, I'll, I'll give you my packet when we're done and you can have it. So thank you for running the article. And hopefully by what you've done here this morning, more people will know about it. Appreciate it so much, Tammy.
Thank you.
And you're very welcome to stay. But if you do have other things you have to tend to, we understand.
Okay, I know.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you.
Take care. I think Tammy is the only elected role officer with us. So that does take us to item three, which would be public comment. Are there any public comments or questions at this time? Hearing none? Again, we'll open it up before we adjourn. Under Fiscal and Contractual, we have no repository properties for review. We do want to note that an invitation to bid has gone out. I'll, I'll review this real quick here. Bids will be received for the County Parks and Boat Launch Maintenance Program. Final qualified sealed bids shall be accepted until 3:00 PM on Monday, October 24, 2022, at the Lawrence County Controller's Office, first floor Lawrence County Courthouse. Each qualifying bid must be accompanied by a bid bond payable to the County of Lawrence in the amount equal to 10% of the total bid. The qualified bids will be publicly opened and read aloud at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, October 25, 2022, during the regularly scheduled Commissioners' Public Meeting here in this room. A mandatory pre-bidding meeting shall be held at the Lawrence County Government Center Commissioners' Meeting Room at 9:00 AM on Monday, October 3, 2022. The bid documents are on file. They may be obtained at the offices of the Lawrence County Department of Planning and Community Development here at the courthouse on this floor. The bids must be sealed and marked, quote, "County Parks and Boat Launch Maintenance," unquote, and addressed to the Lawrence County Controller's Office, 430 Port Street, Newcastle, Pennsylvania. These invitations, or this invitation, excuse me, was published twice in the Newcastle News, September 21 and September 26. The next item on the agenda would be warrant registers. There are five of them. These are the documents provided to us by the Controller's Office, listing and accounting of the checks that they have cut. These are dated September 21, 22, 26, 28, and 29. And Loretta, I'll give you whatever time you might need to look them over. I might add, there, all the documents that we are referring to are here if anybody wishes to see it.
I will move that they be accepted to the record.
Thank you so much. And I will offer a second. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor of accepting the warrant registers, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the motion carries. Thanks, Loretta. The next item would be the minutes of the September 20 Public Commissioners' Meeting. We'll note that the Commissioners did not meet last Tuesday, the 27th of September. The minutes from the September 20 meeting are here. And Loretta, whenever, once you're done looking at them, I can take a motion.
Sound moved.
Thank you. I'll provide the second. Any comments or discussion about the minutes?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, that motion carries. We have no written communications. We do have a slot here for staff reports. Most of you are on the agenda for other matters in the next few minutes. But are there any, are there any issues that any of you should bring up under staff reports over and above what you might be here for other than? Hearing none. And that takes us to Commissioner Reports and Comments. And I guess I get to go first. I think the only thing I'll make note of, and it might be at the end of our agenda. It's not. If I'm not mistaken, the courthouse will be closed next Monday. Does that sound right, Vanessa? In observance of the Columbus Day holiday. I hope I have that right.
Yes.
Yes, courthouse is closed next Monday, October 10. That's all I have, and I'll see what Commissioner Stillvogel might have.
I don't have much, but I, I will take a moment to wish my grandson a happy fourth birthday on 10/4. Oddly enough, as my background as a police officer, I'm different on purpose. And of course, his grandfather is also a retired police officer too. So happy birthday, my cop.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
You'll never forget that day, will you?
No.
It's easy.
No, that's absolute, 10/4.
Yeah. Congratulations. Well, we jump into new business. Item one is a resolution of, what, what number would this one be, Vanessa?
303.
Thank you. 303. This resolution would have the Board of Commissioners enter into a professional contract with Green Acres Contracting of Scottsdale, Pennsylvania. They submitted a quote for the fabrication and installation of what are known as wall tube end caps at the bridge approach railing at the Quaker Falls County Park in Mahoning Township. This, these documents have been reviewed by the county solicitor and the county engineer, Taylor Engineering. They are recommending adoption. So this is Proposed Resolution 303. Would there be a motion, please?
Sound moved.
Thank you, Loretta. And I'll offer the second and see if you have any questions or concerns.
No.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I don't see anybody here from Planning. But this does involve the Southwest Pennsylvania Commission. This Resolution 304 would read that authorization is given to execute documents relating to the agreement by and between the Southwest Pennsylvania Corporation on behalf of the Southwest Planning Commission, also known as SPC, and the Lawrence County Planning Department in the amount of $30,150. Oh, this is for planning as stipulated in the Unified Planning Work Program for 2022-23 as well as 2023-24. I don't want to put you on the spot, but you do more with SPC than I do. Anything you would wish to add to this?
No, I think it's, it's a regular contract abandonment to everybody.
Okay, so you have, Joe, you have no concerns?
No.
No.
Okay.
No concerns at all.
Very good. This is Resolution 304. I could entertain a motion there.
Sound moved.
Thank you. Loretta, I will offer the second. Any further comments or discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, our friends from CYS have a number of contract renewals.
I would say this, I'd rather be, you know, less and less, but I'm not saying that.
It's all right. Part of your work, we understand. Gentlemen, welcome to Mr. Vought and Mr. Russo, both from the...
Mr. Grippo.
Grippo. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I was, I was, thank you, Loretta.
No problem.
I know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Gentlemen, what I think we'll do is, as we normally do, we'd like you to briefly discuss each one. And then unless, as long as Commissioner Stillvogel concurs, what we can do at the conclusion is take a group motion for all of them, assuming, assuming we have a comfort level with all of them. If there's anything we have a concern about, we can pull those out. But let's work our way down and start with Proposed Resolution 305, MHY Family Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Appreciate your time. MHY Family Services, MARS. We previously had a contract approved for traditional MSD. This would add a program variation for problematic sexual behavior. Currently, MARS is going through the process of being credentialed with the managed care provider Beacon. What you see before you is $100 a day. Normally, they're billing $80 a unit, so in 15-minute events. And we have a court order and some children that are going to need this program as they come out of care. And so we're in a position where we can't wait for the approval from Managed Care to make MARS available and accessible to us. And so we worked out a rate of $100 a day until the program is in-network with Beacon. And then they will switch over from invoicing children and youth to invoicing managed care.
Thank you. Questions for Loretta?
This is just something that you have to do in the interim until it gets approved. Will we be reimbursed for those dollars that are being spent, $100 a day?
We will. It'll come out of our current budget for MSD.
Okay. Makes sense to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Thank you. We'll move on to Proposed Resolution 306, Community Specialists Corporation of Pittsburgh.
Community Specialist is one of the variations under Summit Academy or the Academy or New Outlook. It's a program that, it's a renewal that we've historically used. The range of per diem rate is 240, 260, to 368, 25. And I would just pause for a second, see if my colleague from JPO.
Okay.
Because Juvenile Probation, as well as children and youth, can access these different services.
You're welcome to join if you wish. You're comfortable there, whatever works for you.
I'll speak on number six if you would.
That'll be fine, thank you. Okay. Loretta, questions?
Nope.
Okay, good. Proposed Resolution 307, Summit Schools, Inc., the Summit Academy. Their headquarters is in Pittsburgh, if I'm reading this correctly. Now, it's an, I hope this isn't a misprint. I have the same mailing address.
It's all, the academy has three.
I see.
Yeah.
Does this say Agnew Road and the prior, okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
They have, them three are kind of connected.
Good, thank you.
Under the same umbrella, so to speak, yes.
So what can you tell us about this proposed resolution?
The Summit Academy is a renewal. Their rates range from 240 to 750, 42. We, we continue to utilize longer care less frequently. But this is a legacy provider along with several others that we have historically used. We're coming for you in October because, like we have with, with just about every provider this year, we've negotiated. And so with this provider, what we have done, what they, what they would have wanted, they didn't get, but what we wanted, we didn't get. We kind of met somewhere in the middle for sake of fairness.
Sure.
And so I'd ask you to approve this as a renewal and a legacy provider of ours.
Thank you. Loretta, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Proposed Resolution 308 is also Summit School, Inc., the Summit Academy CRP. Oh, this, this is where you came in.
This is where I came.
Wonderful.
This is also a renewal contract for our CRP program that we have throughout the schools. Commissioner Steel Vogel is very aware of this program. They liaison with Juvenile Probation in the schools and all eight school districts in the county to help be advocates for our children in the schools, to help us be aware of any school-related issues, any assistance that may be needed. They work very well with us, information. So we're able to keep in, on top hopefully as best we can with all of the students and any other needs that they may need and also be advocates for them in the school. So they're not treated any differently than any other child, regardless of whether they're under supervision with us or not. Again, this is a continuation of a contract that we've had for many, many years.
I progress, I progress, I might say.
We, we just ask that we, we would continue with that.
Well, it's all going to rest on what Loretta says.
I think we go with the renewal.
Okay. No other questions other than, okay, great. So that's Proposed Resolution 308. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Proposed Resolution 309, Stephen C. Brayden, parentheses, Check Your Mate Investigations of Butler, Pennsylvania. I'm curious, what, what does this one, yeah, what does this one involve?
Do tell.
So, so this is part of our effort to help improve and support our, our termination and adoption process. Mr. Brayden was referred to us by a member of our legal community that participates in our termination and adoptions and recommended Mr. Brayden to us. He has served in the capacity in Butler County, working with Butler County Children and Youth, I believe, for approximately 19 years.
Yeah.
And, and what he does for them, and what we hope that he'll do for us, is when we're having a hard time providing notice of service to parents that were going through the termination process, he will assist us in locating those parents so that we can provide service to them and keep our termination process and our hearings moving forward. He indicated to us that in the 19 years, he's only not found one parent, and that's because Butler County didn't authorize him to go to Africa. That the parent had moved to a different county. And they, they didn't send him there. But, but he will travel out of state. He will, he will use a network that he has available to his access to try to locate people. We're hoping that this really helps us
Yes.
move terminations forward and adoptions in the coming year. The rest of this year and coming year.
Is it, is it, is it accurate to say he is a private investigator?
Yes, I believe he is a licensed private investigator in the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Loretta?
I would just add to that that, because it is sometimes difficult to locate absentee parents. And when you get to that point for termination and adoption, it is crucial that those parents be located. So good to know that you're, you're going one step further to make sure you get them. Excellent, sweetie, yes.
Probably can't help me when I lose my train of thought. It's not able to. I'll keep them in mind.
He hasn't been able to help me.
All right. Thank you. Number 310 is Computer Aid, Inc. of Allentown, Pennsylvania.
So Computer Aid, Inc., or CAI, we're hopeful upon your approval will assist our fiscal team through consultation. As, as you're aware, we have a very new fiscal team with most of them having been in our office three out of four a year or less in their current position. And with the nature of the workflow, this contract will be a cost saver to us. So when you look at the $80 an hour, up to $18,000, in essence, we are requesting a consultant in lieu of an additional county physician. And so we thought this was the most economical way to go about helping support our fiscal operation so we can continue to generate revenue and, as well as bring expertise in that will really better us for a lot of years to come. We hope, we're hopeful that this person that comes in to consult with us will help train, educate, support the current staff, who all indications are they're going to stay in their position for a lot of years to come. We want them to.
Yes.
Do you, do you know by chance, has this company worked with other CYS offices in the Commonwealth?
They have.
Okay.
And, and let me just add that our, our current regional director for OCYA, Amber Kow, is who had initially drawn my attention to CAI or Computer Aid Incorporated, recommended them to us.
Thank you. Commissioner Stillvogel?
No, no questions. Anyway, I'd spoken with Sean, I'd spoken with you about it, we had discussed on it. I think it's a great tool and definitely an asset. It is, yes.
Makes care of 310. 311. This is known as Concern, Professional Services for Children, Youth, and Families of Fleetwood, Pennsylvania.
Concern, we consider a renewal. It's a foster care provider. You will see with the remaining items on the agenda for us that these are foster care agencies. We continue to struggle with finding beds for three categories of youth. Older youth, youth with special needs, and youth that are a part of a sibling group of three or more. And other counties across the Commonwealth have struggled at times with finding homes and beds and have had kids having to sleep at their children and youth agency. And so we necessarily, as of right now in the moment, don't need all of those providers. But we never know what the 11 o'clock hour is going to bring. And so I would assume, what, as a strategy, what we are trying to do is expand our foster care network so that when we have those, again, those scenarios that find those with few options, we have kind of a larger net to cast out to.
And recently we've had.
And recently we've had. We thought we, a few weeks ago, we thought we were going to have a four-year-old with, with no home to go to or no bed. And at the very last moment, we found the, we found a placement. But the search, we had exhausted our entire known network and thought we'd have this small child having a severe fealty on my rebuilding. Every other proposal here is to try to help us keep those children from sleeping on a couch in the Amira building.
Well, and, you know, I could hear long enough that gentlemen know better than I do. As does Loretta. Every case you have, every child, every situation is unique. None of us say, right? Okay. Loretta, do you have any questions on Proposed Resolution 311?
I do not.
Thank you. 312 would be, I hope I say this right, Diacon Child, Family, and Community Ministries of Middletown, Pennsylvania.
That's correct. A renewal for foster care. We last used them in 2017. But again, we're really trying to contract with every regional provider to expand the network.
Loretta, any questions for these gentlemen? Okay. Number 312, number 313. This proposed resolution is Every Child, Inc. of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
Same. We're expanding our network for foster care. We consider a renewal. We last used them in 2017.
Okay. Questions from Commissioners Stillvogel?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution, a Proposed Resolution 314. Mariki, Pennsylvania. I hope I said it right, Marak, Mariki.
Mariki, that's how I say it.
Of Lafayette Hill, Pennsylvania. This is number 314, gentlemen.
This would be, this would be a new contract. We've never contracted with this provider. It's in the area of foster care. And again, we would add them to our resource list in the event that we're struggling to find a home for our child or children.
Thank you. Loretta, do you have any questions on this proposed?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. That would be 314. Then looks like the last one you have is number 315, which is the Three Rivers Adoption Council, also known as TRAC Services for Families of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania.
TRAC is a renewal for us. We have not used them often, but we have used them over the last few years. And so we're asking to renew this contract. And, and there's, the one thing that I will highlight, there is a pretty wide range of per diem rates for foster care.
Yes.
When you look at TRAC, I would say they're, they're on the lower end of the per diem scale. And around $100 starts becoming the high end of the scale. So there's, there's quite a disparity sometimes in the foster care providers. And so, but to be quite honest with you, with these, with those three categories of hardest-to-place kids, the position that we get in, we're working provider by provider by provider. And sometimes we're just hoping that there is a home out there that will take a child in. So we're oftentimes in crisis mode. We're working through our list of foster care providers.
I appreciate that information. And I'll see if Mr. Stillvogel has any questions.
No questions, but just to comment that these are contracts that you put in place in the event that a service is needed that you do need to reach out. There's no cost with the contract to start off with. And then, of course, reimbursable through the state for whatever category it may be.
That's correct.
Yeah. Just a clarification on that. Could you see all the contracts? And people may be wondering what's that costing us? And it's absolutely nothing until they're utilized.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Sure.
Three of you have anything to add? You, you didn't have too much to say today. What you said was important. Glad you, glad you were able to join us. But lady or gentleman, any other questions or input that you have for us?
Thank you.
We appreciate your joining us.
Yes.
What I'd like to do, if Commissioner Stillvogel is so willing, I could entertain a motion for approval of resolutions three oh five up through and including, uh, I have it here. Three fifteen, thank you.
So moved.
I will second that motion. Further comments or discussion?
Yeah.
We'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes. Motion carries for three oh five up through and including three fifteen. We appreciate the three of you joining us. We know you're busy people. If you have to move along, we understand.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Enjoy Saturday.
Yeah. How's your cousin?
Oh, good.
I, I haven't seen him in so long.
No.
If you do, give him like that.
I will.
Thank you. Well, we have, uh,
The happiest people on the face of the earth. I do definitely have to say that. I think we're all happy that this is happening here.
Four proposed resolutions from the jail. Uh, are you all four gonna make a presentation? Or who, is anybody speaking? Or are you just here to observe?
To make sure the contracts are gonna be through. Do it.
Any other people? I'm sorry?
Quiet little minds.
Okay. Well, as we go through these, if, we'll take them one at a time, and, and if you have any input to offer, we would welcome that. Conversely, if we have any questions, we're glad you're here. Because we may need to ask some questions for you folks, but, uh, and it's helpful that Commissioner Stilvogel chairs the prison board, so we're glad that she's here. These, uh, these bids were opened a few weeks ago, uh, at a public meeting by the county comptroller, Mr. Prestipine. So let's take them one at a time. The first one is, uh, three sixteen.
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, this is for the Chiller Replacement Project at the jail. Uh, note, the resolution notes that Rennick Brothers of Slippery Rock, Pennsylvania, submitted a proposal to complete the project. The proposal has been reviewed and recommended by the Lawrence County Corrections Department, of which we have representatives today, of the Lawrence County Solicitor, as well as the Commissioners themselves. And this, uh, resolution would then authorize us to enter into a contract with, uh, Rennick Brothers for an amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
I will second and see if you have anything you wish to ask or say.
No, no comments. Just I'm sure that everybody is, is ready to get the, the work started.
Right. Anything from our friends from the jail on this proposal? Thank you. Um, since there's only four, we'll just do a quick roll call on each, if you don't mind. It's been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Loretta, um, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but could you refresh everyone's memory, including mine? Um, for these projects, the, uh, the funding source, if you recall?
Our, our funds.
Thank you.
Yes.
American Rescue, please.
Yes. Everyone of these pertain to the, the well-being and maintenance of the systems that, that are workable in our corrections institution. Yeah.
Joe's?
They were approved by our actuaries.
There we go. Great.
Rating appropriate.
Good. Thank you both. That's helpful to note.
Yes.
That takes us to proposed resolution three seventeen. And, uh, the, uh, uh, successful proposal also came from Rennick Brothers of Slippery Rock, PA. This is for the roof fan replacement project. And as we noted with the prior resolution, this has been reviewed by the staff at the Corrections Facility, the county solicitor and the Commissioners. Uh, this, this proposal amounts to eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Once again, roof fan replacement. Uh, a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I will second and see if Loretta has questions or comments.
Yeah.
Anything from our friends from the, from the, uh, jail facility? Thank you. Uh, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Resolution three eighteen. This is the, uh, cleaning project for the duct work, D-U-C-T, duct work, at the, uh, at the jail. Uh, the, uh, successful bidder, and it's probably pronounced one of two ways, Rannick or Rainic. I'm not sure.
Rannick.
Rannick?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, the Rannick Corporation of Uniontown, Pennsylvania. They were the successful bidder. Uh, for this service, the dollar amount, the contract will be eighty-eight thousand dollars. Once again, for duct work cleaning at the, uh, uh, facility. Loretta, would you care to make a motion?
I will make that motion.
I will second and see if you have any questions.
No.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mark, friends in the audience? Okay, thank you. And then, uh, oh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Finally, for the, for the jail, resolution, proposed resolution three nineteen. This is for the Security Electronics System Upgrade Project. Um, refresh my memory if somebody would be kind enough to this. Does this involve cameras?
Yes.
Thank you. That's what I thought.
Entire security system within the jail operations.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, as noted with the previous, uh, resolutions, we did do the, uh, public bidding, uh, sealed bid process. The successful bidder in this was Stanley Security of Fishers, Indiana. And their successful bid came in at five hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. And it has been a, been reviewed by the appropriate, uh, uh, people and, and organizations within the, uh, government structure. Uh, I'll ask for a motion for three nineteen.
So moved.
I will second and see if Commissioner Stilvogel has anything.
I would just make comment to, um, to the staff and those of you that are here. Thank you for your patience, for your time. The, going through the bidding process, because it is so specific, and you figure it's twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, trying to get in there to keep things running, let alone getting the bids available, things done, having things happen, and to actually work through all of this while this is still a twenty-four seven facility with a lot of movement happening. So, um, I know it's been in a, a process that, that has sometimes been, uh, excruciating, but it's done, and I, I look forward to, to you guys, um, getting in there, digging in, getting the work done. Everything will be, uh, improved in line on the, uh, facility. So thank you guys for your patience.
Thank you. On behalf of, uh, behalf of Ward Malmiser, unfortunately couldn't be there. Thank you for all your time and consideration in the resolutions. These are really needed over at the jail. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
And for those of you on camera, that was Captain, uh, West that was speaking on behalf of the board. That's, we were just starting to do that because we had a guest that was here that said sometimes we don't know who is speaking.
Absolutely.
And it will help us, so no problem. Thank you, guys.
In fact, do any of you have anything else you would wish to add? I, I can't say any better what Commissioner Stilvogel said, so I'll simply say ditto to what you just said. And we wish you, uh, success going forward. Uh, do we need to vote on three nineteen?
Yes.
We do. And it has been moved and seconded. I will ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. You folks are very welcome to stay, but, uh, these are not the most exciting meetings in the world, as you probably gathered. Uh, but you're welcome to stay, but if you have to move along, we understand. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you. We have a couple of, uh, board appointments, uh, to consider. Um, the first is the, uh, county's Agricultural Land Preservation Board. One of the incumbents, her term is, is getting ready to expire. And that is Penny Kretzer of Washington Township. Um, just a minor correction on the resolution. The, the road that she lives on, Vosler Road, only has one S in it. That's just a very minor correction. Uh, I'm sure Penny, Penny has been a, we can both attest to what a good member she has been. And, um, I'm glad that she has a desire to continue to serve. So the proposed resolution three twenty is for the reappointment of Penny Kretzer of Washington Township to the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
I will second and see if Commissioner Stilvogel has any remarks.
None.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, resolution three twenty-one is the same board. The Agricultural Land Preservation Board is another incumbent who desires to be reappointed. Uh, this is William Allen. Most of us know him as Bill. Uh, a minor correction, uh, he lives on Covered Bridge Road in Wilmington Township. And, uh, I apologize, uh, both Penny Kretzer's term and Bill Allen's term will expire on December thirty-one of twenty twenty-five. I'll make that note. Um, I would ask for a, a motion for resolution three twenty-one.
So moved.
I will second and see if Commissioner Stilvogel has anything to offer. Okay, thank you. Uh, again, our appreciation to both of these folks for their, what they do in terms of their service. I, I will note that these are non-paying positions. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. The next two, I, you probably figure, what am I gonna do here?
I know.
I, I tell you what I'd, I'd like to do. I'd like to table them both.
Okay.
I would prefer to abstain, and hopefully next week all three of us will be here. And let me offer what we're talking about. Uh, the first proposed resolution, I think we assigned it a number today, I assume.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This would be resolution three twenty-two. This would, uh, reappoint myself to the, uh, Lawrence County Conservation District Board of Directors for a one-year term. Um, I'm very willing to serve, but I'd feel more comfortable, um, I guess I'm uncomfortable voting for myself. And I'd appreciate maybe if we wait a week and
Sure.
maybe have all three here next week, and then I could abstain. Are you okay with that?
I'll defer to you. I have no problem if you vote for yourself today because I know the job that you do on the boards that you're on, Bill.
I agree.
If it's, if it's a comfort level for you, that's fine. I decided to put that out.
I think, I think.
I could vote and, and motion and second and carry it through. I would do it myself.
I appreciate that very much. But we'll, I'm more comfortable, I think.
Absolutely.
Well, if you wouldn't mind motioning to table resolution three twenty.
So moved.
I'll second to table. Uh, all, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the same would apply then to proposed resolution three twenty-three. This is the Northwest Pennsylvania Planning Commission, of which I am a member, and I would need to be reappointed. I, I, I've noted many times before, as has Commissioner Boyd and Commissioners Stilvogel, we're, we're somewhat unique in that we're one of the very few counties in the state that actually belongs to two different regional planning organizations. We, we belong with the Southwest Pennsylvania Commission and the Northwest Pennsylvania Planning Commission. And when, when my two colleagues took office in, uh, early, uh, twenty twenty, we sat down and we figured, well, here's what we'll do. The Southwest Commission does require all three of us to sit on that board. However, I've kind of taken a, a, a backseat to that, and my two colleagues play a much greater role in the Southwest Commission. On the other hand, the Northwest Commission is structured differently. They only get one commissioner from each county. So I offered to do that one. And, uh, so I kind of focused primarily on the Northwest. And then Commissioners Stilvogel and Boyd focus more so on that, on the Southwest. So that's how we've, uh, chosen to divvy that up. So this resolution would reappoint me to the Northwest Commission, but I would ask if we could table it and reconsider it next week, please.
That's fine. So moved.
Thank you. Thank, thank you so much. Yes, I am, and I thank you. And I'll second, uh, roll call to table, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. We have one proposed formal budget transfer. This would be three twenty-four. This proposal involves Judge, District Judge Russo's, uh, budget for his facility. This would take one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Commissioner's contingency and transfer it to Judge Russo's Maintenance and Repair Line Item to assist in the cost of his new phone system at his new facility in the Shannick Township. Uh, this is number three twenty-four. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second, and I'll see if Loretta has any questions.
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Loretta, if you don't object, I'll read these into the record, and then we just want to do an omnibus motion at the end.
Yes.
Now, as I go through these, just stop me if you have any questions. I'm not gonna ask each time.
You might.
But if, if either you or Joe, just wave your hands, say, hey, Dan, I got a question.
Okay.
We'll address it. Thank you. Uh, these are not assigned a resolution number, but we'll enter them into the record. The first transfer is from the comptroller's office. This is to assist with a copier, as well as what is referred to as account cleanup. And they're taking revenue or money from their salary of staff line item, as well as their contingency. They're putting five thousand dollars into minor equipment, twenty-five hundred dollars into part-time temporary, two hundred and forty dollars into the salary of the comptroller, a hundred and one dollars into the retirement administration salary, administrative salary, excuse me, and two hundred dollars for telephone, total amount being eight thousand, forty-one dollars. Juvenile probation is asking for a transfer of one thousand, fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. Nine hundred of this is coming from their contingency towards the vehicle line item. And a hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-four cents is coming from travel and training and going into materials and supplies. Explanation being transfer of funds needed to cover increased vehicle use due to field shifts, transportations, and placement visitation, as well as realignment of monies for equipment purchased. The next, uh, proposed, uh, transfer comes from the treasurer's office. The total amount being fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. It is coming from both his contingency line item, as well as his travel and training line item. It is going into, uh, contracted services, uh, maintenance and repairs, and postage. And once again, the line item is, the total amount of the transfer is fifteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Under, uh, Children and Youth Services, they are asking for a transfer totaling sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, the first line item it's coming from is their salary of staff of thirty thousand dollars. The other amount, thirty-six thousand, five hundred, they don't identify. They have the account number, but they don't say what line item it is. All of this is going into the purchase of vehicles. Um, I'm okay with it. I'm, and I know you wouldn't know, but, but if, if our friends would have stayed, you could have asked them.
Right.
Are you okay with passing it with us finding out where it's coming from? Because we can always revisit.
Right.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Joe, you have a comfort level with that?
I do.
Okay, all righty. If we could maybe ask them in the future to, yeah. Thank you. Uh, I might add, these are all reviewed by the county comptroller's office before they come to us. So I don't want you to think this is the first time anybody is seeing this.
There are money in the various accounts that things are being moved from and added to. So that's, that doesn't, it doesn't get to paper if it isn't approved from the comptroller's office.
Exactly. Thank you. Also for Children and Youth, uh, this is to cover employee travel expenses, as well as refuse hauling. Uh, as you know, they're in a separate building. Um, they're taking nine thousand dollars from Equipment Maintenance Line Item, putting that into travel and training, and taking seven hundred and fifty dollars from Equipment Maintenance, putting that into refuse hauling. Total amount, nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The coroner is asking for a transfer from his contingency of four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars into the software line item. This is to pay for software, is that word contract? Of, in, in, in money from Act one eighty-two, his contingent, contingency account. I hope I'm reading that right. Transfer amount, four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Domestic Relations is asking for a transfer of a thousand and three dollars from their contingency account into refuse hauling. Evidently, there must have been a price increase
Right.
for, uh, garbage disposal or, because they're also in a separate building.
Yes.
Okay. Next is the Public Defender. He is asking for a thirty-three-dollar transfer from his contingency into Public Defender Client Transportation. Uh, there's a small shortfall in that line item. And that takes care of, I guess we got through those. Oh, I see why it was so much longer. They were broken out in the, uh, in the printed agenda. Okay. Having heard all of those, Loretta, do you have any questions on any of them?
I do not.
Would you be willing to make a motion to approve these requested transfers? So moved. I'll second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Stilvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you both. We'll note that there are currently, well, we'll now have four proposed resolutions on the table.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two have been there for a while.
Yes.
One involving, uh, liquid fuels and one involving the, uh, uh, economic development corporation. Those would remain on the table, as well as the two that we've just brought on, uh, this morning.
Yes.
And note that for the record. And then, uh, before we open it up for public comment, we'll note again, the Commissioners will reconvene, uh, a week from today, Tuesday, October eleventh, here in this room, public meeting. And as noted earlier, the courthouse will be closed on Monday, October ten, And as noted earlier, the courthouse will be closed on Monday, October 10, in observance, in observance of the Columbus Day holiday.
Now, Dan, I'll, I'll clarify, because I do believe it is Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay, we'll make note of that and enter that into the record. Thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, before I ask for final comments from the, from Commissioner Stilvogel or from Joe, we'll go to public comment. We have two folks in the room. I think, uh, Debbie?
I have a quick question. All those contracts you're working for the jail, are they all the low bidders?
I believe they are. Yes, they are the low bidders.
Yes.
That's all.
Good question, because as you know, we're, the law states, right, the lowest responsible bidder. That word responsible is always in there, so I'm glad you asked that. Anything else? I'll give you my packet when we're done. There's a lot here today.
Do you have a list of those projects on the transportation program?
Not, not yet. No, not yet. Actually, actually, what we're simply doing, I believe, what the proposal will be, is to release the funds by way of communicating with the 27 municipalities, asking them to identify projects. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay, so though there's no list at this point, it's simply to move forward with communicating with them, uh, uh, to see if, uh, they would be interested in applying for liquid fuel dollars.
Yes.
And, and we have talked a couple of times in the past, and this is something that eventually is gonna be, be addressed. We do have a pending request from Wayne Township. They have a, 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 a small bridge that is out right now on Greenhouse Road in Wayne Township. They've asked for some assistance from us. One of the things that they have done, I believe, since they've made the request, they've worked with their engineers to put that project on the tip.
It is, it did make it to the tip, yes.
So that'll help us in hopefully dispersing some liquid fuel dollars to them. But we'll, we'll get to that. We'll get to that.